Okay, open meeting order. Pursuant to Governor Baker's July 14, 2022 revised order extending certain provisions to the open meetings, Article 38, Section 18. Meetings in the Virchey Hill Regional School District School Committee where we conduct the vote in person, general vote, and further notice. Agenda items of those reasonably anticipated by the chair, not all of them listed, may be discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Meetings being recorded by CTSB, School Committee of the Quarter, the Virchey Edge, Virchey Eagle, and other members of the public. Once transferred and approved, minutes will be made public and posted to our website. So, we will start with a public hearing for the FY 24 budget. Do you have a motion?
Motion to open a public hearing for the fiscal year 2024 operating capital budget.
Second, it's got a motion and a second. We have one member who's remotely, so all votes are remote, and we'll take this vote also as an attendance vote. So both, William Pope? Hi. Anne Hutchinson?
Hi.
Jason St. Peter?
Hi.
Bonnie Vaughn Mahoney?
Hi.
Hi.
Sarah Pabola?
Hi.
William Fields?
Yes.
Diane Singer?
Yes.
Rich Dehony?
Yes.
And Steve Ben, the president, who we're just have one member short tonight. Let's start with this public hearing. So Peter, do you want to give an overview?
Yeah, so we've shared our budget a couple times, both that are maybe three times actually. So we shared a draft preliminary budget, then we shared the proposed draft budget. And again, last night, we had a meeting with finance and select board members to go through the budget again. I think I'll just do sort of a super high level summary. I won't even show slides because I think we've done, we've gone through it a lot. Things we're trying to continue to do is to provide high quality education for all our students, to focus on their social emotional learning, and to provide equitable access for everybody. At each building, we're making some small shifts around resources, adding a directed studies supervisor to the elementary school to help with school tone and climate. We're obviously in the middle of a search for a new principal, as Ben's stepping away, and we'll recognize Ben more later. And at the high school, we're making really two shifts, to add a pre-kated to certified teacher in the early childhood program, and expand the mapped inside preschool there. And that's good for our community, and it's also good for our students who are in the early childhood program. We simultaneously have the application in to expand that program to a full Chapter 74 vocational program. So we're really excited about that. And then, for years, we wanted to add an additional health teacher in the high school and community groups working on health and wellness that recommended that. And that's actually a unmet state requirement, and we've got a health position in the budget as well. Less than stuff, it's sort of additional expenses, bigger shifts around contractual obligations, and then utilities, right? So both gas, electric, or all, gas, electric, and oil are going up. And other things we've done, a really good job of managing or using grant funds that we are very aggressive and successful at getting, so that's wonderful. We go through sort of the whole thing, and, you know, I won't go into it in fine detail. I think there are two interesting things. Next year is the last of our payments on the elementary and middle school construction bond, so after next year, that goes away, and that's a big deal. Other couple things, we talk a lot about excess and deficiency, and our certified E and D is $1,171,659. And there's a recommendation to use some of that, but not too much of that going forward. Then we look at how the assessments happen in the population shifts. Great Barrington has 13 more students, Stockbridge is four fewer students, and West Stockbridge has three fewer students. So that shifts the percentages around a little bit. Great Barrington is almost 74.5% of the district's students. Stockbridge is 13.16, and West Stockbridge is 12.35 or 36. We put all that in, and we look at the minimum local contribution and the other things, and we get to our, the total percentage change, which is 6.5% across all the towns, $1,677,631. And then the increases to each of the three towns, Great Barrington is the highest, in part tied to the slight shift in students, or to the percent shows up, and it's 7.58, Stockbridge is 2.38, and West Stockbridge is 4.75. So that's a high level overview. I think the administrative team and I worked really hard to come up with a thoughtful, deliberate budget. There's not really any fat in the budget. It's all targeted specifically to support students. And for those who are joining at this date and don't know the work that's happened, we have a very active finance subcommittee, and this work really started in August, and we met regularly all through the late summer, fall, and winter, to both look at it from a programmatic perspective, what's the value to young people, and then from a financial perspective.
So I will now take comments from members of the public. We'll start in the room. If there's anyone who wants to speak, and then we'll go to the virtual. As we're seeing anyone in the room, so if you are online and you want to speak, just raise your hand and you'll be recognized. Carrie Manzalini, go ahead. State your name and address for the record, please. Just unmute yourself. There you go.
Can you hear me? This is Carrie Manzalini, grade four, Muddy Brook, and I live in Pittsfield, Massachusetts. I've been working at Muddy Brook for 12 years now. I've been a classroom teacher for 27 years. Laura DuPont asked me to come tonight to speak on behalf of our library position at the elementary school, and how important that is to the children at Muddy Brook. And so, I just want to bring that up. I didn't hear it in the budget, but I know from my 12 years' experience there, that we used to have a full-time Spanish teacher. We used to have more interventionists, and we used to have a full-time librarian, and all of those in 12 years' time have gone away. And I really think that we're not providing access to all of our elementary school children to literacy, and I think that's a really important fundamental role that a school should provide to every child in guaranteeing knowledge and culture and literacy. And I want everybody to reconsider some of the staffing positions at the elementary school, especially the librarian, because I just feel like, as time goes by, these positions are going to be forgotten, and these positions are really, like I said, needed, especially the, we lost a full-time interventionist as well. We never got that back, and we need a lot of help supporting our elementary school children so they can be successful to go to middle and high school. And it seems like sometimes more of the allocation is toward the middle and high school, and I'm advocating for more of it to be toward the elementary school so that the children can have a good foundation before moving on. And that's all I really have to say. Thank you. I think a lot of the teachers do agree with me at the middle school, at the elementary school, but they're unable to come tonight.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
So again, what we're doing is, if you have an interest in speaking, just click the little raise your hand bottom button on the bottom of the screen.
Go ahead, Laura DuPont.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay, hi, this is Laura DuPont, Muddy Brook, part-time librarian, part-time interventionist. And I just wanted to thank Carrie for speaking up and coming tonight. I don't, I just kind of had the question, in presenting the budget, it was saying that resources would be real, reallocated, and I guess the question that a lot of people keep coming to me with, as the part-time librarian, is, will the librarian position become full-time next year? So I told a lot of people I didn't know the answer to that, and that this was the time for them to come and speak up. But I have a lot of staff members coming and wondering if the librarian position will become full-time again. And it was, I believe it was under the impression this year going part-time, that it was kind of a year to recuperate from COVID, and bringing our librarian back part-time would help with that this year, in hopes that it would return full-time the following year. So I didn't know if there's been any discussion about that possibly happening when you were discussing, you know, reallocating resources.
Thank you.
They didn't answer my question.
Seeing no one else, a motion to both votes. I say, there we go. Erica, go ahead.
Thank you, Erica Milkie, 360 Park Street in Huscatonic. Is it correct that this is just the time for you guys to hear concerns? You're not answering questions, is that correct?
No, after we close the public hearing, we will have some discussion.
Okay, got it. So going along with what Carrie and Laura had brought up, I guess, as an accounting person myself, I understand how, you know, there's certain costs that just continue to rise even as the pool of money that is available for the budget doesn't rise at that same rate. And I'm just wondering, I would love to hear a discussion from the finance subcommittee around how, how as like healthcare costs and pensions and salaries, and people live longer, so the pensions we're paying to retired schoolteachers goes on for longer, like, what's the long-term plan to avoid having to continue to cut certain types of services? And, you know, Carrie Manzalini's comment around the services at the elementary school reminded me that there was one short year where I was the half-time, long-term sub for the Spanish position, and that was the year then that it was cut fully from the budget. So it had gone from full-time to part-time to less, to nonexistent. And it does make me, like, I understand the real need to cut things because of rising prices of other items, but I'm just wondering, like, how, is this something that has to be reevaluated with towns, and more town money allocated, or what's the long-term solution to this sort of squeezing of certain line items?
Thank you. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else. I give you one last chance. So do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion, motion to close the fiscal year 2024 public hearing regarding the operating capital budget.
Second. Roll call, Will?
Hi.
Anne?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
Bonnie?
Hi.
Sarah?
Hi.
Phil?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Rich?
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous. Peter, do you want to just introduce a few things that were brought up, or connected to the public hearing?
The public hearing. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So one thing, first of all, I really appreciate everybody for sharing their thoughts and chiming in, and obviously, many of the things that were raised, we're discussing and thinking about. A couple clarifications, and we could share this in some way, but I think just sort of stating it makes sense. Over time, in the schools, there are cycles of when we're adding positions and potentially losing positions, and/or reallocating resources to create other positions. So while some of the things that we said are entirely accurate, they don't necessarily tell the whole, the whole story. We, we don't have a Spanish teacher in the elementary school, right? That's true, and we used to. And the librarian role this year was, was half-time instead of full-time. But there are other things that people may not-
And this budget, the proposed budget maintains that.
Right.
Yes.
What, but there are other things that people, we remember the reductions over the years, but we don't often remember the additions over the years. So there's also a new clinician in the elementary school. There's an additional ESL teacher in the elementary school. We're adding directed studies coordinator in the elementary school, which is a position that had been in the high school and the middle school for a long time, and never in the elementary school. So I just think it's, and these are just some off the top of my head, but it's important to realize, over time, some positions are eliminated because of fiscal crunches, and then, in other times, some positions are added. The other thing that is also in the balance on this is class size. So class size continues to be relatively low now compared to, compared to other times. And these are all in relation to each other and quite intentional.
So School Committee, questions or comments? Go ahead, Diane.
Is there a plan to bring back a full-time librarian position in the elementary school?
As it stands now, no, but between now and when we, or when you vote on the budget, that's a real possibility, right? Now, and this has sort of always been, we try to get the biggest ones addressed early, but there's always one or two things that almost are talked about at the 11th hour. I, I actually hear what they're saying, and I think a full-time librarian could be quite interesting and valuable in that building. The sort of conversation is, do we do that at the expense of something else, or do we increase the budget? And I think it's a conversation worth having.
If we were to do that tonight, what would be the impact on the budget, Sharon?
It's not quite that easy of a question.
Yeah.
So that's why we're not, that's why we're not voting tonight.
Okay.
Originally, we were, we have a few weeks. So Sharon will put down a list of questions, there may only be one, and when we come back prior to our next meeting, to our vote, then we'll have a better answer to that.
Because what would we be, on my notes, on the finance committee notes that I take, I have a .5 elementary school librarian, a .5.
So that's, so that would be an add-on for full FTE.
Okay.
So, and in the current budget, that does not reflect that, right? Because I see-
It reflects a .5, just as seen as this fiscal year.
Okay. So the options are three-fold. We just, whatever that cost is, for Sharon to tell us what it is going, we add that to the gross assessment, you know? Two is, we cut some other line item or items to make up for that. Or three, we discuss other revenue sources to fund it.
So the revenue source, the blank name.
I'm trying not to flame trend.
Yeah. One of the things to remember for people who are new on the board especially, is that when COVID hit, there were some drastic shifts, not cuts, but reallocation. Tim Lee was here, he came up from away, we thought smaller class sizes were needed at the time, and that's what we did, we reallocated some things to have smaller classes. And it worked out so well, we maintained that. There weren't massive cuts in any of the schools. This committee has never endorsed massive cuts, as long as I've been on it. So, but there have been reallocation, and there have been some casualties because of that reallocation. You can't just reallocate without something going away. So, and I'm not saying I'm not in favor of the librarian, but just a historical perspective.
And it was told us that this plan was to maintain these lower COVID-level class sizes, that we would have this benefit if we wouldn't need as many other folks because we had smaller class sizes.
Yeah, I mean, I really think they're in balance. They're like so good.
And in our current population right now, we can get some of our elementary school grades down to the same class sizes that my daughter graduated last year had, and eliminate teaching positions.
Good, potentially.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a conversation-
We could have a conversation about, we want to go to 18 to 22 class sizes.
Right.
And find-
But would we, if we add a .5 librarian, is that going to really impact the class size? Is that-
The decision, as Rich said, the decision we made is how we're going to fund it. Is it going to have a huge effect on the budget? Well, we all know it's not going to have a huge effect on the budget. The chairman will come back with the accurate number, but we know that there's already a .5, right? So we're adding a half a position plus benefits as well. But-
It would actually be a full position because we'd have to put the .5 back to the intervention person, and then add a full-time librarian.
So we would, and I realize this is a little uncomfortable, but we would not, we could keep a .5 interventionist and a full-time librarian, so we would not have to do- Well, that's the one, yeah.
Or you could have a .5 and a .5 on each thing, and then another .5 for another half librarian, separate person.
Separate, you're right. There's more, there's many ways to do that, and I'm not advocating for one of them, but-
Can I just add a point of clarification? So with an interventionist, what, is that a position that's hard to fill, a .5? Someone to come in for that? Like, let's say, just play it out, if we had a full-time librarian, would we be able to find someone to fill a .5 interventionist? Is this another question?
Well, I mean, it could be hard to fill, right? Unless you found the right person. And then the whole idea behind an interventionist, and it's a strategy that many schools use, is it's somebody to work deeply with young people to make progress, right? If you had a half-time person, then presumably they'd either work in the morning, or they'd work in the afternoon, and that might limit the range of people or students they could have access to, because if a student in a given day, even in elementary school, is, there's some morning meeting, get-together thing, and then they spend time on literacy and math, you have to sort of figure out how to get that person to support the student during half of the day. That would be harder than having somebody who had some flexibility during the whole day. But we, we could, we could try it.
And Peter, just for the sake of people who don't know, can you explain interventionist, directed studies person?
Yeah, so the interventionist is a teacher who supports students by working with them either one-on-one or in small groups, but not typically in a whole class, to make progress. A directed studies supervisor is like a unique position, I think, to this district, or they might have versions in other places. And it's sort of, they're compensated in between a paraprofessional and a teacher, so a little more than a paraprofessional, and a little less than a teacher. And, and they play a real role in school climate and tone, in supporting students, doing what they need to do. In an elementary school context, they may play a role connected to recess and some unstructured, or less structured activities, recess, lunch, things-
And what are the qualifications for that position? They're not certified teachers.
They're not certified teachers.
And they're not focusing on academics.
And they're focusing more on like, tone and behavior and climate and sense of community. And it's a really neat role, and I'm glad we, we have it, and the two folks that do it in the elementary, in the middle and high school now, really contribute quite a lot.
And do we have a sense of this interventionist, how much work this person does in a typical day? I don't know how granular you could get, but is she overwhelmed and overworked, or is there, is there a space?
Really, what they're doing is, so a typical teacher in the elementary school, I have a class of students, on the low end, 12, maybe the high end, 18, right? An interventionist would work with one or small groups of students throughout the day doing really targeted things. So it, 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 it's, that role is a strategy to help young people make progress or accelerate progress if they're struggling in a particular area. And, and you might work with an interventionist for six weeks, 10 weeks, 12 weeks, or you might work with an interventionist for five years, depending on sort of where you're at and where you're making progress. And most people aren't sort of monolithic in their strengths nor their challenges. So an interventionist might work with me on my math skills, but with you on literacy and with Diane on, and I'm just saying this as an example.
Fine.
So can I make, can I make a proposal? Because we're-
I do.
My personal opinion is that this, funding a full librarian is worth fully exploring. Even before the comments set out to that, I may see no reason why we have full-time librarians at the most of the high school, not the elementary school. I think if there's one that was, the one that should have a full-time is the elementary school above the other two. But I don't, so maybe we just take a straw poll, if we think it's worth pursuing, then if so, we step back and let the administration come up with some funding options, rather than us trying to do the chop-up job here, you know what I'm saying?
We need to struggle, I think, as Sharon and I asked them to come back, because if we had a public comment, we should at least take seriously what the public had to say. And I think it was a rational comment, so come back with restoring to a full-time librarian at the elementary school.
That's right.
And I think you should also come back to a full-time interventionist, because there, at least I'm talking about that, what it would cost us. You know, my historical perspective, once again, which you get to have when you've been here long enough, is the buildings were built, and one of the things that sold the buildings was we had full-time librarians, and the library was open, and kids could use it all day. And, you know, for various reasons, and I supported it, and we went away from that. Things, things change as we go along.
So Will, I'm glad it was brought up. I think agree largely with the rumor around this, and we'll come back with some proposals.
Do we want to look at a finance meeting? We don't have to pick, you know, sometime that first week in March?
When's our next meeting, the ninth, right?
We're voting on the budget the ninth, we have to vote the ninth.
Yeah.
And I know there's no update on the school committee meeting, but we could
Why do we?
Do a finance and then make it.
On the ninth.
Why don't you just do it on the ninth?
Before him?
Yeah, do the finance committee on the ninth and then present it to the committee.
Okay. That's fine, I mean, what, what if it like?
Well, it's complicated, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want to do it on the eighth?
Well, I, we don't have to pick a date, I mean, the whole first week of March is open. And we can even do like a lunchtime Zoom meeting if you wanted or something. I would like more time in case.
Yeah.
I just think there's, I'm not, there's, I said, there's screw ways to do this. One of them is cutting other stuff, and I don't like springing cuts on.
Right.
And I agree with you.
Last minute on anybody, especially not this committee.
No, and I agree, unfortunately, the time of the meeting starts at joint budget meetings the first week, so I think I've been all of those that hold me.
But we don't have to, we don't have to.
We don't have to decide.
We'll take it, and Peter will have no reason not to everybody, so if everybody wants to zoom into that one, you know.
It would be easier for Sharon and I not to make a decision or a recommendation with the finance committee half an hour before. Yeah, in terms of, I mean, that's when we make mistakes around math and stuff, and I prefer to not do that. But I would be open to a meeting anytime I could find one on the week of the twenty seventh or the week of the sixth.
That's what I said, the week of the twenty seventh through the third, if we could, we don't do it right now, but we'll do.
I'm just, we're not doing it right now, but else we're on March second, that's a night of building committee meeting possibly. And we could do it before now.
My only thought is if we do it sometime the week of the sixth, I should be guaranteed to have the governor's budget stuff. So that's my only hesitation, doing it before, we could have all of that information.
Yeah, but I actually would go the other way and recommend we meet as a finance committee on the second. And then.
Then when, whenever options are, we're not gonna vote, I think, we're not gonna, you know, probably hone down, talk about, vent about, and then you'll have all that information. So when, if there's gonna be a motion made on the ninth regarding this topic, then you'll be able to give a clear pitch, a super clear pitch on the ninth to the whole committee.
And if we have to turn, we can still meet as a finance subcommittee on the ninth to discuss that element.
Yeah, 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 I think that's a good line. So we're gonna treat for a finance committee meeting on the second, as everyone's always welcome to, but.
So that's gonna have to be, because our school building committee is five thirty, so that's gonna have to be at four thirty?
Can you make it?
I think I can.
Can Steve? Yeah. The other thing I don't know is it may not make sense to have a building committee meeting unless we get more information from the NSDA. I'm anticipating more information, but I haven't received it.
Right, it says hold the date, that's why I said.
Right.
All right, so it looks like finance committee, five thirty on the second, but if we need a building committee, then we'll push it down to four thirty.
Okay.
Does that sound good?
Yep.
That makes perfectly good sense.
Yeah, that's good. I just changed my tone.
Can I ask one more thing about the teachers and about these roles?
Yes.
I always find it very hard to figure out what's going on at the school since my children are not there anymore. So I really like the fact that we're hearing from teachers and people who are working there and parents. But to me, my question is a lot like your question, what does a point five interventionist do? You know, like if you, if you have a point five person, what are you not doing with the rest of the point five? Like if you have a point five librarian, what are you not doing? So I remember when my kids were little, when we first moved here, and the teacher said to me, we can't let the kids go to the library. And she said, I just, I can't do it, and the librarian was there or not there. And so I used to go to the school and take the kids to the library. And so I don't know how things have changed now, but now that I'm not in the school, I'd really like to know, if you have a point five librarian versus a full-time librarian, what are you getting for that? Or what are you giving up for that? And the same with the Spanish teacher, and the same with, like, how does this person really affect the school? Like, I don't know what an elementary school Spanish teacher would do, but what are you giving up by not having that?
Well, we haven't had one for a while. Right, we haven't had it for a while, it's been.
Did you, I'm sorry, is this a sound thing? Do you mind coming up?
Um, so the library right now, how it's set up is there's paraprofessional in there the rest of the day. So if kids do come in, have someone in there to check and focus out. The grade levels that do not have a library class right now have a tech class opposite that, so that fills like their day specialist-wise. But they still get to visit the library, but they don't really have a library experience, if you know what I mean? Like, they don't have the librarian doing a lesson and, you know, that. So that's the difference right now.
So if we hired a full-time librarian, would you, there'd be more actual like, like, library sessions, classes?
There'd be more sessions, yeah, each grade level would have an actual library session.
So my other question.
Very privately, you know, at the presentation of librarians two weeks ago or three weeks ago, Laura kind of hinted that she could do more as a full-time or with a full-time librarian.
Right.
There should be more programs offered and more resources utilized than is under the current. I mean, it wasn't pointed, but I caught that she didn't use the word, oh, everything's fine, I could, you know, which in a budget situation, you know, everybody always wants more. But in that, I just caught from her, I could do more. And so I do see an advantage of adding and making it a full position, but.
Well, we know there's an advantage. I guess the other question is, we're talking about kids being in the library, but there's also programming, ordering, there's keeping the library organized, the whole bunch that a full-time librarian would do that has to at least a little bit go to the wayside when you have a part-time librarian, even if you have a professional on there or the other half.
And then the other side of it is this interventionist role, right? So if somebody's halftime instead of full-time, particularly in the context of interventionist, it's just about caseload, right? So if somebody's full-time, they can work with X number of students, and it might depend on the frequency when they're working with those students, but if somebody's halftime, then they're working with likely half of X number of.
And do we know, in the case of the interventionist, what's falling by the wayside because of the halftime situation? I mean, are there kids in school who need intervention and are not getting it because?
There are two things, I'll have Katie talk to me in a sec, but they're almost competing notions, right? One notion is the interventionist is there to help students who aren't making typical progress in a regular classroom. And the other thing, a little inflammatory, is what other ways can we support teachers in helping more people make typical progress in the classroom? So there's a role for an interventionist for all of us who who fully struggle at some point, or maybe even partially struggle, but there are also things that individual teachers can do in classrooms to preempt the need for for that. And it's doubly complicated now because particularly the littlest ones at Muddy Brook had a rough entry in the context of COVID, right? So like, the middle schoolers to some degree are rolling with the punches, but if you were four when COVID happened, you didn't have a typical entry into early childhood education, and now you're six, and we've got a lot of work to do.
I guess one of my questions would be, you know, and it may not be the most popular question, but we have a fiduciary responsibility, so if we're reinstating two positions full-time, if that's one of the things we're entertaining, we are. Is there something at the, at the elementary school that could give back a little bit of money? Is there like?
Why, why do you say elementary school? We have position after position at the high school, we never had this debate. More principals, more commissioners, more athletic directors, more anything, and we never make them cut. At the elementary school, we always make them cut in their own building.
That's not true, and if, if the superintendent's budget, the administration's budget did recommend this, that's why.
Yeah, no, I got it.
That's the reason.
Yeah.
It's a little different, if this was recommended from the beginning, then I'd say, okay, that's, you know, there's a rationale for it. But obviously, not everything could be recommended that we wanted, that's the only reason.
And I like to think I'm pretty good about recommending the right things, but I admit that occasionally I might miss something.
There's always, I mean, we know from the finance subcommittee that if we allow principals to ask for everything that they need, it's as long as they need. We just can't give everything, we wish my luck.
I think what I'd like to see is what we have asked them in the past when we were looking at cuts, we were asking, okay, what are the options here? And I think that's what we would ask them now. What are the options available to us if we make it a full-time position? And what are we gonna lose in other areas? And that's what we asked them. And I just want to say, in regards to administration, I remember the initial hearing of the finance committee in December, we were looking at an eight percent increase of the budget, and they got it down to six in round figures. And remember, one percent is three hundred thousand dollars. So I have to give the administration credit for certainly reducing the budget by at least six hundred thousand dollars. And that's not chump change. So, you know, there have been cuts. I particularly am in favor of what I'm, I thought I was gonna hear tonight was a full-time librarian, but that's, I want to see what I'm looking at in regards to what's being lost and what's being gained. And I agree with Rich. I really do think that since we have full-time librarian and the other two, it's about time we do it in the elementary. But that's to be debated at the next meeting.
Yes, I will. Anyone else?
We, we are what?
Yeah, go ahead, the top of the.
Interventionist.
So right now, in all honesty, so you have Laura who's a halftime interventionist and Bart Minkler who's a full-time interventionist. So they only have a finite number of periods they can serve as children. And you don't want the group size to go huge because they don't make as much progress that way. So there is prioritization that happens with database discussions that happen weekly with the providers. To Peter's point, some stay six to eight weeks and make enough progress to go back into the general classroom for reading services, and some get identified for special needs. So there's, that's, right, you can always serve more. And that's the conundrum when you try to figure out how many interventions you need, because you can always serve more. But to Peter's point, in the classrooms, there's some responsibility for what's called tier-two intervention in the regular classroom. And that's something that we've been working with the staff on at these data meetings to say, well, COVID has caused twelve kids to miss this particular skill. Is there something we can do in the general classroom to address that skill? So there's, it's, it's not a clear-cut answer, but yes, if you have less interventionist, you're serving less kiddos in a more concentrated way. But that doesn't mean it can't be done other ways. But that's why we're studying the ELA a little bit differently.
And I just want to clarify, like, it's a moving target. Many people are doing remarkable work to do those like second-tier, tier-two interventions in the classroom, and the needs are changing constantly, right? So it's, it's not an either-or, it's an and and both, and we need to continue to do the high-quality work that teachers are doing in whole classes, and then also provide additional support.
Thank you, this was a really good discussion.
Yeah.
Excellent. So we will briefly go through the rest of the event. My birthday is on here because it's our usual agenda, but this really was about the public hearing tonight. So, do you want to just do, read the news?
Well, I'm actually gonna shift it, I guess you don't have to do all that, it's okay.
I know you have some students here, so I can.
Yeah. So what I would like to do is just give a little update on what happened on Tuesday. And I need to figure out how to say that word better, I need an interventionist. So on Tuesday, there was a phone call to the dispatch center that got relayed to the Great Barrington Police where someone made a threat to explicitly bring a gun to the high school and, to paraphrase, shoot everybody up. That created a whole set of responses tied to our training. And most everybody's aware of it, and it was covered in the newspapers and other media. At the high school, we did a formal lockdown, and then also did that at the middle and elementary school. Chief Stordy, the Great Barrington chief, was there very quickly. Two officers from Stockbridge were there very quickly. And then many more officers from Great Barrington and many surrounding towns through mutual aid were also there. It happened in the late morning, around eleven, I don't know, twenty, eleven-thirty. And we did the lockdown, we got out some initial messaging. At first, we believed it was real. Ultimately, we realized it was part of a bigger swatting incident, like a hoax, where somebody or multiple people or through technology, many schools were called. And I think on our day, on Tuesday, there were like ten or fifteen, and then, and then yesterday, there were another ten or fifteen. And the week before, it happened largely in Vermont, but some other places, right? The really good news is everybody was safe. The hard news is it's profoundly disruptive and anxiety-producing for everybody. And then if you've got previous trauma or victimization or anxiety, like, it's even worse. Staff and students did almost perfectly what they were trained to do. They took care of kids, they got them into places, people were safe, they were quiet. The officers went through the high school and really did a search and assessed and determined that things were, were okay. Then we contacted parents, some parents came and picked up their kids. Other young people stayed the rest of the day, finished the day with us. We had after-school activities. And then we've twice debriefed this event, so administrators debriefed it yesterday within the district, and today we debriefed it with Stordy. And tomorrow, the police are debriefing it. And we learned some things we could do better, all right? And I'm not talking about those things because it's, a lot of it is tied up in security. But a big aha we had was around communication. And it's clear, and this is really interesting, a little nuanced, parents much prefer texts and phone calls. And in a school context, in the, sort of, in the middle of an emergency or perceived emergency, phone calls are a terrible thing, right? Because if I do a robo-call or a recorded call to all the staff and somebody forgot to silence their phone, and there's actually a assailant or perpetrator in the building, that ringing of somebody's phone could alert somebody that somebody was trying to hide or be safe. So going forward, I'm gonna reach out to parents and families with texts and phone calls, and then I can throw in emails, it's no big deal. Add that anyway for the people who look at their emails. And for staff, texts and emails, but not phone calls. So that was one big aha. There were some other ones. Um, there were some other ones, uh, and the reunification process is another thing. We're gonna uh, we're gonna uh, work on. Um, uh, the other thing that's really interesting is for many people, it's their natural reaction to rush right to the school. In in reality, for the people don't rush right to the school because the time we invest in. Interacting with the people who are rushing to school makes it harder for us to do the other part of it, but again, it's. It's human nature, right? So uh, I I think those are the big things, a couple of things I wanted to share. Uh, we pulled together very quickly, a meeting that night on Zoom. Um, and much to my heart, because once this happens, it's very hard to undo. Uh, we we got to the first hundred people and then and then a cap that I thought was uncapped, it actually was capped. But you can't really tell when it's capped until you get to the hundred person. So that was frustrating for people who wanted to get on, our tech team was really good and within. Five minutes, we got the cap raised to what I thought it was, which was a thousand. Uh, and people were able to join and and we did a longer sort of. Sharing of what happened and then responded to to questions, both verbal questions and. Questions in the chat and and Chief Storey joined us. Um, Sergeant Ulrich joined us, clinician from each building joined us, the principals joined us. Uh, and and we were able to talk about that and then the day after. Uh, all the principals held some sort of check in with their staff before students came and then had. Um, uh, either scripts or they actually went classroom to classroom. Uh, and checked in on everybody. And then uh, the counselors and the clinicians made space to connect with people and continued to do that. Knowing that some people may have a slightly uh, delayed response to it, so. Um, it's really unfortunate that it happened, it's the best dress rehearsal we'll ever have. Uh, I think people did uh, really some remarkable things. Um, and and there's some some learning uh, opportunities for us. So if anybody has questions, I'm happy to respond to it, the big thing, I, right before this meeting, I sent a note to all the staff, I thank them again for. For uh. Holding and supporting the students uh, as they manage their own. Anxiety around this, right? And and it's really, it's heavy duty and it's unfortunate and I'm I'm sad that we have to train in response to these things. Uh, and I'm glad that that we uh, we've done pretty good with our training and and we have more work to do going forward.
Um, Peter, we have a audit of the communication with, by some outside company, right? We talked about that. Are they gonna study this situation and how it was handled communication wise?
I I I don't think so, I I could ask them to do it, but. Um, the the couple, uh, and and it's interesting, it's very hard to. Uh, sit in a building in the middle of this and write a coherent message with no. Typos, like I really pride myself on my writing and and my wife is teasing me, there are a couple typos in my note to people and at the end of the day, it doesn't matter, that's. Not so much, right? But but uh, I think going forward, you can never anticipate what's gonna happen, but I will have a couple. Uh, uh, more templates that I could edit on the spot as opposed to writing from scratch, so. I I don't need a a communications consultant to help me, I think on the emergency piece of it, I understand that. Uh, well, and 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 there's a different button I can actually push in parents where that would get to people a lot faster than the button I chose to push. Uh, so so I think we're we're in a good spot uh, for next year, the the. The really valuable feedback is in that call with parents about how um. Uh, many people don't have access uh, to their email during their day and they look at email at the end of the day, but but. Uh, uh, texts are good, but the interesting thing, there's a, there's a limit on characters in text, so. You think it's hard to write an email about an emergency, write an email about an emergency in in three hundred characters. Uh, right, and I think the answer is, and Katie and Cynthia did this, they just send send two texts instead of instead of one. It got cut off in the middle.
Um, what was nice about that Zoom meeting, I was on it, uh, so I think some other people were here. Um, was were the positive reactions from the parents and the, at least in my opinion. The unbelievable support that this district has from parents. I did not see in the chat thing, anything that was really, you know, critical. There were some good questions about maybe a resource officer, which was handling, you handle that, we discussed that, maybe that's an area we have to relook again. But the amount of support that the parents that night showed was amazing and it just showed to me. I think somebody mentioned in the chat thing that this district has a great deal of parental support. And faith in in both, I guess, the school committee and the staff of of how to do things, so I just think, I just think people have to be aware of that.
Yeah, no, I I agree and I I really appreciate that and a number of people. Uh, reached out to me afterwards, a number of people shared updated emails and phone numbers and uh, and. Oh, I, the, it it's disturbing, like, it's disturbing, and I was very proud and I remain proud of how people. Uh, responded and it's not just uh, staff, but it's it's local law enforcement, it's uh, other emergency planning people.
Well, when you think about this, these kids that are in the high school now, this has been their educational career, they're used to it. I mean, my granddaughter, Stephanie, you know, she came in, she was a senior. And she came in and she she just walked in and and she was in the midst of going to an internship, because she wanted to say hello. And she said, oh, we had a lockdown today.
Yeah, on the other side, at some point we'll do, and we've done these in the past. Uh, one of the reasons to have an executive session is around school safety and. And and we can do that and I can share granular details about this incident and our and our other planning and. Part of the reason why we met with Chief Storey today was we wanted to do it in a timely manner before we went on vacation. Because all those things are fresh now and they and they won't be so fresh in in a week.
Yeah, the only the only thing I would say is that we owe a debt of gratitude to the police forces from all of our communities around us and not just in our district. I don't know how many responded, but there were a lot and um. They're all very professional and it was very impressive and both Sergeant Ulrich and Chief Storey on the meeting uh, that evening. Uh, gave you some sense of reassurance. Um, uh, having the situation under control and really being partners with the school district, so I think all that is really something to be proud of.
No, I agree and I had the state police, they were there in 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 full force, which was really nice.
Okay, uh, we will move to the end of the agenda, which is public comment and Kerry, you had your hand up for a while, so go ahead. Just unmute yourself.
Hey, everybody, um, I just want to end by saying thank you for considering uh, reinstating the librarian position. And also the intervention position. There are a couple of things I want to say uh, before I leave and one is that um. Just because a paraprofessional is a half day in the library doesn't mean that the children actually get their services. That they uh, need because what is happening is we have a huge staffing issue at Muddy Brook. And we have a lot of people calling out sick and a lot of people that are sick. Um, and that takes our staff everywhere and a lot of times, this year especially, and also last year. Um, the library was just closed, so if you go back and look for many days, our children aren't receiving services, I think someone asked about that. Um, what are they missing? Um, and they're li- they're also missing a lot of um, literacy skills that can be addressed in the library by the librarian. Patty Melville did a great job doing that, um, and since she's been gone, it's really difficult to uh, continue what she has. Uh, what she created for our children in terms of literacy and we do a lot of talking about equity in our district. And it's inequitable to have a full time librarian at the middle school and not and the high school and not at the elementary school. I really truly think you have to reinstate that. And then the second thing I want to say is in terms of the interventionists, and I know Kate spoke to this, but um. We now have um, intervention being served by two paraprofessionals. Now, they're highly qualified paraprofessionals and um, I I think they both do a great job, I'm not saying that at all, but. Um, they're not certified teachers and so certified teachers are um. Needed to basically provide services for intervention, we really need to take a look into that. Um, so they're missing a certified teacher for intervention, a lot of the children. And I have been teaching for twenty seven years, you can look at my MCAT scores for every single year I have been teaching fourth grade. And they're really great. Um, and I can't do the differentiation for all of the children in my classroom. Um, it's just nearly impossible, especially with the children coming in with all kinds of issues from COVID. Um, and the issues are great, um, and inequitable as well, there are children that are two or three years behind in reading. And they really need the intervention piece, so they're missing out on that. Um, and that's all I have to say tonight, I'm, I I know. I know in my heart that you'll do the right thing and I think that all the teachers at the elementary school and all our students in our district deserve those two positions back. So thank you very much for considering.
Anyone else? I'm gonna give our students a couple minutes.
Okay, so um, tomorrow, the seventh grade has a Romeo and Juliet field trip, we are going on a field trip to see Romeo and Juliet. Uh, and we're going to the Shakespeare, oh, yeah.
They actually came in today to show us some acting drills and such to get ready for us to put on our own play later in the year and we are very excited for that.
What play is that?
Romeo and Juliet.
The same one?
Yeah, and each class has their own little戏.
Last Friday, there was a fifth and sixth grade dance, a Valentine's Day dance, and it went very well for them.
Um, tomorrow, we also have a fun day for the seventh grade, that includes um, the field trip, which is just to get an excitement for break concessions.
Seventh and Sixth Street Council hit out Valentine's on Valentine's Day, so people could order Valentine's. And then they'd have to pay one dollar and then um, we give them out on Valentine's Day. Um, we would like to briefly bring up the lockdown, um, the teachers stayed calm and reacted well, the students were scared and um. A lot of kids didn't realize that it was like an actual lockdown until their teacher informed them. And they were being really loud and just not. Yeah, they're just being loud and obnoxious until they kind of, it wasn't a lockdown.
Um, but, sorry. Uh, overall, when we live, like, um, students were informed of what was going on mainly and to stay quiet and calm. And but the following game was a little confusing, uh, many students had wished that we had discussed it further with the teachers and just talked about it and were slightly disappointed that we didn't get a chance. Um, and also some students later realized that it was difficult for um, kids still learning English to understand the announcement. Um, but they were also basically informed on the situation.
Um, so some students think that uh, we should be able to have our phones for uh, instance, this like. Just to inform the parents.
But, you know, like many parents knew what's going on, it like some kids did, I've been having their phones and texting their parents and being like, hey, this is what's happening, like, I'm all good right now. But this, or also where this is bigger discussion and stuff like this, but it was just something I wanted to mention.
Thank you very much. Any anyone else? By your unanimous consent, Kerry Turner.